For each discussion and action item, the public will have ten minutes per item and one minute per speaker. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Now let's move to our opening procedures. First, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you are willing and able, please rise.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. We're now moving to the land, labor, and body acknowledgement. Do we have the video? Thank you very much. That was from Pinole Valley High School. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, can you read it for us inside the room?
Yes, of course. Sorry, one second. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichen Yum, Huacma, Cark, and Aloni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. We are now going to move on to our labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today, of all immigrant labor, including voluntary, involuntary, trafficked, forced, and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. We're now moving to B4, which is the West Country-Costa Unified School District's school board anti-racist statement. The West Country-Costa School District Board of Education is committed to the work of anti-racism, the conscious and active effort to identify, challenge, and correct the racial inequities in the systems and institutions within our schools and community. Racism, explicit or implicit, stands in direct conflict to the fundamental principles of WCCUSD education. To carry WCCUSD education into the future, we recognize that we must continually renew and reflect on the roots of racism and develop new ideas to meet the times. Unjust ideas and policies and the racial inequity they produce have shaped us, our schools, and our society. We strive to uncover unconscious biases and practice anti-racism as individuals and as board members. We challenge ourselves to persist through the discomfort necessary for growth and learning, to deepen our listening and our examination of racism and oppression, and to develop a strong understanding of how our personal experiences and feelings fit into a larger picture of continual oppression. Each member of the school board, individually and collectively, is responsible for creating and nurturing an anti-racist learning environment where each student, staff member, and community partner is respected and a valued member to WCCUSD community. We are uniquely positioned, and it is our responsibility to identify and dismantle racist ideas and inequitable practices in ourselves and across the district. Therefore, we commit to supporting anti-racist policies, programs, and practices for our children's education and well-being while building strong and inclusive school communities. We commit to holding each board member accountable towards these goals and move the work of anti-racism forward. We also commit to holding the West Country-Costa Unified School District staff, students, and community to living the standards of anti-racism in our schools. Dr. Hurst, will you please do roll call?
Absolutely. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone. President.
Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Christian.
Good evening, President.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, I'm present.
Trustee Phillips is absent. Student trustee Jorge Espinoza.
Good evening, President.
And student trustee Luke Wilson is not here at the time. And just to let the board president and board members know that Luke Wilson is also a student trustee for Contra Costa County Office of Education, and this is one of the meetings that he will not be able to attend with us. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Hurst. We are now moving to B6, Report Rotification of Closed Session. Dr. Hurst, this is your item.
There was no report out. Closed session. Thank you so much, ma'am.
Thank you so much. We're now moving to B7, the introduction of the new student trustees. Go ahead, sir.
We would like to take the time to introduce Jorge Josue Espinoza Jr. He's currently a senior at middle college, high school. He's committed to become a first-generation college student from his family. During the early stages of his life, Jorge has learned the impact the legal institution has had between himself and his community. Being given these personal and social experiences, Jorge developed a great passion to pursue a career as an attorney through his infant understanding of the law and lawmaking while committing to being an advocate for the people. Jorge served in leadership roles and opportunities in and out of the classroom, previously serving as a sophomore class president and junior class vice president for middle college high school to currently serving as vice chair for the San Pablo Youth Commission, a group that works for the betterment of the youth in the city of San Pablo. Finishing his junior high year with his AA degree, Jorge also hopes to leave an example to not only his family, but to many who have walked the same pathway so that they be, so that they're able to walk, be a walking testimony to everyone demonstrating the social and systemic barriers can be broken. I also want to share with you that Jorge, his hobbies are practicing the guitar, playing sports like basketball, football, soccer. He also enjoys spending his pastime with his family, friends, and being at church. His favorite food is Mexican food. And he decided to be a board of student trustee because he believes his commitment to representing the interests of his peers and partnering classmates and students will make a real difference in the initiatives that reflect the needs of the entire student body at West Contra Costa Unified School District. So that's a little bit about Josue.
Thank you very much. Board members, would we like to, anyone would like to welcome our student trustee? Okay, we'll go straight around. We'll go trustee Reckler. You first, go ahead.
Good evening. Good evening and welcome. I just wanted to say hello and welcome you to the board, and I'm looking forward to your contributions over the semester. Have a good time, speak up, and I'm sure you're gonna learn a lot.
Thank you so much.
Okay, let's go to trustee Christian.
Yes, I want to say welcome aboard, and this is a ride, and I appreciate you and all the things you are doing in the community. And we're glad that you're here. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure.
Anthony, can you hear us? Can you hear us out there? Yes? Okay, good. All right. It's better. Okay, thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President. Trustee Espinoza Jr., thank you for volunteering. You are critical for this board because you are representing the 27,000 students that we have in the district. So as you make decisions, remember that you are representing all of them from all 54 schools. And the reason why your vote comes first, even though it doesn't fully count, we take it in consideration as we take our votes. So keep that in mind as we move forward with all of our items throughout the semester. Your voice is critical for our decisions and to represent your peers. So thank you for giving us this time, and we're all here for you in case you need another resource. Thank you.
It is my honor, and thank you for these opportunities.
Well, he's great. Okay. So thank you so very much, Mr. Espinoza Jr. If you need anything, like everyone said, please reach out. You have all rights of the board. So you can make a motion, you can second a motion, you can ask questions, you can do all of those things because it is our hope that you will sit in these spots one day. So that's our, our hope and our wish is that you will come back and represent your entire adult community like we're representing our adult community. But so thank you for starting out representing the students because they are the reason why we're here. So, you know, while out, Fran, if you need anything, let us know. Okay?
Thank you, President Smith.
Oh, you're welcome, Fran. Now, do you have anything that you want to say?
No, other than giving my gratitude and thanks to all of you, Mr. Gonzalez-Hoy, Mrs. Kessler, I believe, Reckler, I'm so sorry, excuse me, Mr. Christian, Mr. Hurst, and Mrs. Smith, thank you so much, all.
You're great, Fran. All right, here we go. We are now moving on to, we are moving on to public comment. B8, WCCUSD Public Comment: How to Address the Board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to issues affecting public education in WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form, or participating in Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Due to the Board, the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in the public. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Kim Chamberlain.
Good evening. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain, IFPTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President, but I am also the Student Information Services Supervisor for our school district. I am one of the many people in our district that are heading the Educational Benefits Program, and I want to give a huge shout out because we are now at eighty, 68.50% as of today, actually about five seconds ago. So we have 7,311 students left to get forms from, and I'm gonna give a shout out to Fairmont. You're doing an excellent job at getting those forms in. They have worked very closely with us achieving that. I also want to give a huge shout out to several of our other school sites, Pinole Middle, Perry's, Deansa, Valley View, Downer Middle College, Sylvester Greenwood, Obama, Shannon, Dejean, Pinole Valley, Ford, King, Steed, Grant, Chavez, Ellahurst, Dover, Stewart, Verde are all well over the mark. You are doing a fabulous job. I would like to give a huge grateful thank you to all of those school sites, parents, students, staff for getting those forms in. We only have a few left to get. We really need to push for this. I know it sounds silly, but we really need to push. If we could possibly get them by October 1st, then we could actually get a little more in there for us. High schools, you're doing a great job. Remember, put those forms in. If you even have to do them on a paper form, we will put them in for you manually. Thank you very much. Keep going at it. That is a lot of funding for our students, especially our bus passes, technology for students to keep achieving. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Our next public comment is Dwan Dow. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, my name is actually Jim Niebelmann. Dwan Dow is my wife. For some reason, Zoom shows her name. I'm an ESL teacher with our district's adult school program, and I've taught English to adult immigrants at Dejean in the morning, and before that at Sarah and Ford Elementary School. I urge you to respect and support our vital contribution to the district's educational goals. In a community with many immigrants, we teach English and family literacy to the parents of many K-12 students, enabling them to help their kids do better in school. Our adult school program unfortunately has been badly damaged by the district's sudden dislocation of our morning classes at Dejean and its abrupt reversal of our move to Coronado. We have held classes at many K-12 sites for decades without incident, teaching English and family literacy to the parents of children attending these schools. It was wrong of Dr. Hurst to unilaterally cancel our move to Coronado without consulting us based on the prejudice and fear mongering expressed by a few staff members there. In so doing, Dr. Hurst has unfortunately validated the ugly anti-immigrant stereotypes that have been pushed upon us by reactionary political forces in recent years. I ask you to consider whether this hasty, ill-considered decision violated the spirit of the district's anti-racism policy, which is meant to foster inclusion of all people regardless of race or country of origin. I support the president of our union, ASTU, Kristen Persley, in her demand for an apology. This isn't about hurt feelings. It's about serious damage to our ability to support parents and students in this school district. A centrally located site, Coronado, was suddenly torn away from us based on fear of the other, just after another centrally located site, Dejean, where we had taught for years, was also taken from us. This must be rectified by the board. Before COVID-19, we taught at multiple K-12 sites, but these classes were closed due to the emergency we faced. Please.
Next public comment is Samantha Torres.
Ms. Torres, there's a little face button.
There we go. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. Good evening, board and staff. I'm here again to talk about soccer fields, and if you're tired of hearing about it, trust me that I'm tired of dealing with this. Okay? Last time I came, I spoke about non-resident users taking over Kennedy High School soccer field, and I'm back because residents are still struggling to find adequate, safe sports fields in this community. I'm informing you that I got called yesterday that Helms Middle School Field was closed. It is no longer available to the public because of a damaged soccer goal. Let me tell you about Helms. Helms Middle School has three soccer fields, one full-sized field and two mini-fields, and it is adjacent to the community center in the city of San Pablo, but they are not connected. So this community center may be active and open, but the fields are not. The times that our club was using the field for practice before they canceled it last night, there were family members walking the track, there were kids riding their bikes, and yes, there were soccer players using the fields. It's so awesome to see that field activated like that. It is such a gem in the community. What happened to our joint use agreements? Why isn't this field made available to the public anymore? We need to reactivate this, right? We need to work on our joint use agreements. But now the field is not available to anybody because of damaged soccer goals. Well, Helms, people play soccer there every single day because people there know, they just bring a ladder, they jump the fence, and they have a full day to play soccer. Nobody's there to kick them out, nobody's there to stop them, right? The community doesn't understand why three soccer fields in an area with so little access to parks is not available to the community. It was our privilege as my club to rent the permit to open up the field for the community. Sure, we use the field for practice, but the community came and got to enjoy their parks and enjoy their fields. I'm urging you, please invest in taking care of our fields. We need them very badly for our children's and for our community. We also need Kennedy Field back. Thanks.
Our next public comment is Alon Harrison. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. Thank you so much. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Thank you so much, you all that helped us get the LCAP through. It isn't perfect, but it's work in progress. One thing I did notice, and I need you all to make sure that we can do something about this because I will be talking to the state level about this also. That school site plan that y'all got looking like the template, the LCAP template, unacceptable. There is no way for parents to understand 70 pages and advise off of that is too much. And I think we need to look at the, a simpler form. We have the data dashboard, which generates out each school with the data in it. Using that is much more friendly for parents to advise on school site plans when they're on the advisory, either through the SAC or the APAC or the MDEC, whichever one they're on. But that 70-page one, not so much. That is not working in partnership. That's overwhelming and too many papers. So I, where I do appreciate the efforts, I think we just need to keep working on the kink so we can have some smooth, you know, transition and communication about the things we would like to see for our children and what programs and services. So if we could work on a simpler site plans for parents to be involved and engaged, that would be appreciated, and I'm complete. Thank you.
Our next public comment is David Bellew. Please unmute yourself.
So job number one for any school board is to maintain local control. Over their tenure, members of this board have shown a clear pattern of fiscally irresponsible actions that have put this district at serious risk of state takeover. Due to steep declines in enrollment and attendance since the pandemic, the district has faced a fiscal crisis, a very difficult situation that has been worsened by the actions of the board. Members of this board have attempted to refuse all the one-time funds associated with return-to-in-person schooling, voted down necessary staffing reductions, voted to implement raises the district could not afford, and have continued to deficit spend, and most recently failed to approve a budget within the legally required timeframe. All actions that have further imperiled district finances and led to direct oversight from the County Board of Education. The fact that we are under county oversight is clear evidence of this board's failures. The interpersonal dynamics among our trustees also show an obvious pattern of dysfunction. Over the past four years, it's been rare to be able to make it through a board meeting that does not feature personal attacks directed from one trustee towards another, and this personal animosity has clearly impacted the board's ability to effectively communicate amongst itself and do its job. You, you don't have to like each other, but you do have to be able to find a way to work together. Getting to a balanced budget in order to maintain local control will require extremely difficult choices for every board member. If you are unable or unwilling to make those choices, the state will take over, and the kids who will be hurt, hurt the most will be the most vulnerable ones in our community. It does not matter how much you care about the kids of our district in your heart if you do not vote and act responsibly. Please start acting as if the future of the district is at stake because it is. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, I am gonna honor my most favorite teacher, who we celebrated his life today. That is Coach Steve Alameda. He gave this district 37 years of his life, and I'm just gonna say upfront, I am not okay. So I'm just gonna share with you what I put on my social media to honor him. So, Coach, you were the wind beneath my adolescent wings. You strengthened me. I began to soar from high school graduation, go Eagles, through college, go San Jose State Spartans. I know you were a man of faith. I know you are in his loving arms of comfort. Dealing with the suddenness, the shock, I know each day will bring less pain and more peace. But since your passing, I have been in my fill. I am okay saying out loud that I am not okay. Your impact on my life is pulsating through my mind, my veins, my heart, my senses. Every student, every child deserves a belief. I am a passionate and purposeful-driven educator because of you. Thank you, Coach Steve Alameda, for believing in me. And what I know is that some people have no idea about my passion for what I do, but he is somebody who did not have to be the educator that he was to me and to a generation of young people who came through Kennedy and who came through Pinole Valley High School. And I'm unapologetically the educator that I am today. I'm 10 toes down for these kids because Coach Alameda was 10 toes down for me. So I just want to honor him and just give him the love, the respect, and the reverence that he is due for all that he did for generations of students.
Our last public comment is Jean Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Hey, good evening, everybody. I would like to start off the new year strong, and so I'm asking that the board or whomever department that this is applicable to, please consider testing Verdi TK8 students' vision in the beginning of the year. When they test this, the last couple of weeks of the school year, these babies have gone a whole year without their sight. I had seven kids, seven, out of the 23 I had that needed referrals for glasses. I can't help the parents get the glasses over the summer because they're gone and I'm gone, and they won't be tested again until second grade, and they go without their much-needed eyesight to be corrected all this time. Please, please, please allow us Lowland Schools over here in North Richmond, actually the only school in North Richmond, to have our eyesight tested in the beginning of the year. Thank you very much.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, everyone, for your public comment. We are now moving to stand-in reports. Staff, do we have UTR? Yes?
Yes, I do.
UTR is online? Okay. If we can put five minutes on the clock for UTR?
Mr. Francis Cortez, please unmute yourself.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Good evening. Can you hear me?
Say that one more time?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Uh, thank you for this opportunity to address you, board. Good evening, board members, superintendent Hurts, and community members. I am here with you on. I am here with you on the online space tonight as President of United Teachers of Richmond to highlight some issues, in fact, we both are students and the dedicated educators who serve them. Uh firstly, I'd like to uh thank and appreciate Dr. Hurst and President Smith Bolt for convening the Anti-Racism Advisory Group that UTR has been uh invited to participate for this year, and I'm really excited uh to support not only this work uh with the district, but also as uh uh the exclusive representative for the educator to support our students. Additionally, I would also uh echo some of the calls for a collaborative process between the Adult School Teachers United leadership who work directly with our adult students and who are overwhelmingly the parents of ca- and caregivers of our students. And I urge the district staff to find a uh central location that is more uh geographically uh close to the proximity to where our uh adult education students live. Uh, Mr. Abelman, who spoke earlier, actually taught a English second language course to families uh with to the room adjacent to mine at Ford Elementary, and so I can attest to the value that the adult school students and the educators to support them bring to our overall communities, and it's really aligned with our community schools ethos. And if we are uh working to be a community schools district, I think that incorporating the adult education students into into that framework is is paramount. Uh, one of the things that I wanted uh addressed to you all today is really uh overcrowded classrooms. UTR has visited seventeen school sites over the past uh four weeks of school, then we are really currently facing a serious challenge due to under-projected student enrollment. Um, the the business offices purview over uh projections has severely underestimated the actual number of students in our district. And this has led to overcrowded classrooms, particularly at the secondary level. We've seen core classes such as English, math, and science, which are ballooning with more than forty students per class, while PE classes have seen enrollment rise to as high as sixty-five students. This is unsustainable situation, and it really hinders the quality of education that our students deserve. Teachers are stretched beyond capacity, and students are not receiving the individualized attention that they need to succeed. We're also dealing with significant teacher shortages uh with vacancies uh to start a school year with twenty-five um vacancies that are vacancies with twenty-five schools, and I appreciate that there's been some movement in filling those vacancies across the district. But uh in classrooms where we still have vacant positions, we have our students with inconsistent instruction that furthest train the educators who are present. And uh we really want to encourage um addressing this gap immediately so that we can ensure that all students have qualified educators in every classroom. Another uh thing that is of concern is that there's delayed services for deaf and hard-of-hearing families. We're concerned about the delays in assessments and services for families of infants who are hard of hearing or deaf. Um, we really want to encourage the prioritization of these uh uh students because um the district is still grappling with a backlog of assessments left incomplete over the summer. Uh, these children do deserve timely support, and the delay in services is causing further harm to families already navigating difficult circumstances. Um, finally, I also wanna uh support the Educator Workforce Housing Resolution that is being poured today by Trustee Christian. Uh, the resolution presents a crucial step in addressing the educator workforce housing, which has made it increasingly difficult to recruit and retain high-quality teachers. Rising housing costs are pricing educators out of the very communities they serve, particularly for Black and Latino educators who face disproportionate challenges. And I can include myself in that uh as a district alumni, I now commute from Byero to uh West Contra Costa uh because I couldn't afford a house here in in West County. So we know that workforce housing is a viable solution. We've seen it uh currently in the works in San Diego Unified and legislative initiatives such as AB twenty-two ninety-five and the Teacher Housing Act of twenty sixteen, really provide avenues for school districts to develop housing for their employees um and our uh education support professionals. We we foot we support the uh Board's pledge to pursue workforce housing development and participate in the CSBA twenty-twenty-five cohort for education and workforce housing, and this will really help us explore viable options um and access technical systems to finding opportunities. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have asset for the standing report? No, okay, no. Uh. So I don't see the line on here. So let's go to ASTU, Ms. Persley. And Ms. Persley, before you get started, I just wanna make a statement to the community and to our adult educators. I wanna say that part of my job is to make sure that we have a um a well-run meeting. So a well-run meet meeting means that everyone is able to say what they need to say, but it's done in such a way that's respectful. Some of the adults in adult ed may have not felt that way. And I wanna apologize from the dais that I didn't course correct some of our comments that were made at one of our board meetings prior. So please pass that apology on to the adult uh the adult ed students because they are our students. And all of our students should feel safe um under the umbrella of WCCUSD. So I will uh give that to you in writing, but I just wanted to say it from the dais. So thank you, and thank you for carrying that message on for me. I am complete. Go ahead, ma'am, when you're ready.
Oh, is that right? Okay. All right. Uh, thank you for that um apology. Um, and good evening, Dr. Hurst and board members and district staff. My name is Kristin Persley. I'm the president of Adult School Teachers United. I am here to request a public apology for our adult students as the district has, based on absolutely no facts, publicly demonized our students as a danger to children. Demonizing English as a second language students, the district gives the appearance of buying into the toxic national conversation about immigrants. And tragically, in its haste to capitulate to baseless accusations and unfounded fears, the district seems to have closed the door on a model of adult education that improves academic literacy and literacy outcomes, not only for adults, but for their children. When asked to learn that the adult school had to move out of Dejounte, we demanded to negotiate because simply moving the di- four-daytime ESL classes there, Alvarado as proposed, would have disadvantaged students and teachers. Alvarado is too far from where most immigrants live. Removing ESL classes from the central Richmond-San Pablo area where they were most needed would create a huge gap in service, reduce access to ESL for students, and cost teachers their jobs since adult school classes are under what are underinvolved can be canceled. Asked to accept the district's offer of four classrooms at Coronado, where we had offered ESL classes in the past, adult school students would have a separate entrance, and a wall would be constructed to separate the adult school classes from the rest of the school. On August seventh, I was busy helping with the move, tagging items from the Dejounte classrooms to be delivered to Coronado. That evening, I planned to make an enthusiastic report to the board about a roundtable discussion I had recently attended hosted by Ed's Force where the advantages of adult ESL classes at elementary schools, including increased literacy and academic success for children, adult students, were discussed. I had experience with these outcomes as West Contra Costa Adult Education had many ESL classes at elementary school sites for years before the pandemic. I plan to share ideas about how the adult school could collaborate with Coronado and to offer to attend parent meetings to hear how the adult school could best serve that community. However, that afternoon, after hearing that some Coronado staff are upset about the move, I realized that my enthusiastic report might be seen as aggressive, and I canceled it. I was confident that once we were at Coronado, we would find ways to work with the Coronado community. As when we were at school sites before, the school community appreciated the classes and saw them as an asset. That evening, it was distressing to hear Coronado staff and parents complain um and expressing fear that adult school students could be a danger to their children. But I still hope we could win them over once we were on site and consume reality. But we never got that chance. Three days later, Dr. Hurst sent a message to the Coronado community assuring them that after thorough review and consideration, the adult school classes would not move to Coronado. This thorough review did not include any discussion with or even notice to the adult school union. Dr. Hurst assured the Coronado parents that their children would be safe, implying that the unfounded fears expressed at the school board meeting were somehow justified. This crushing blow had effects that went beyond Coronado. With no notice to the union, in violation of labor laws, the district made a unilateral decision to move the ESL classes to Invictus, assault even more inaccessible to our students in Alvarado. When we had no and when we returned to the bargaining table, all previously offered options for colocation at elementary school sites were off the table. Even attempts to open one citizenship class in East Room where parents have been requesting the class for years are mysteriously being blocked. Our only alternative was to cram our entire daytime ESL program into three classrooms at Sarah. We're not okay. We lost many students. Our supplies and equipment are in a big pile in the multipurpose room. Teachers can't find their books and equipment. The morning classroom Dejounte had to become afternoon classes, and they are small. So it's uh so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We are now moving on to Agenda Review and Adoption Board. We are pulling item C three. Anything else? Seeing no, Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
You're gonna you're gonna come back to consent, or are you pulling consent?
No, I'm going. I'm coming back to consent. We're just pulling um item C three right now. Okay. Any other changes to the agenda? Seeing none? The agenda is now adopted. We are now moving to B eleven, Resolution Number twenty-four twenty-five dash twenty Hispanic Heritage Month. Uh, Ms. Forrest, this is your item.
Thank you, and uh good evening, Board President, Trustees, and Superintendent Hurst. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and the West Contra Costa Unified School District proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four as Latinx, Chicanx, Hispanic, Afro-Latinx Heritage Month, and encourage all educational communities to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities.
Thank you so very much. Go ahead, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
I I was gonna make a motion. Is there? I move that we approve Resolution Number two-four-two-five dash two-zero Hispanic Heritage Month.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so very much. For the record, I believe I heard you trustee Phillips. For the record, trustee Phillips was the second. Any comments, board? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. All right, here we go, Mr. Espinoza Junior. You're up. What's your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to Resolution Number, we're at B twelve, Resolution Number twenty-four twenty-five dash twenty-one, Resolution in favor of Prop Two Facilities Bond Act two thousand twenty-four. Teacher Payne, this is your item.
Good evening. Good evening, board, staff, and community. It's my pleasure to be bringing this item tonight. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing board of the West Contra Costa Unified School District supports Proposition Two, the Kindergarten Through Grade Twelve Schools and Local Community College Public Education Facilities Modernization, Repair, and Safety Bond Act of two thousand twenty-four to provide much-needed funding for school modernization and new construction to provide students with facilities that promote academic achievement, well-being, and preparation for college, career, and civic life.
Thank you so very much. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you, President. I move that we approve Resolution Number two-four-two-five dash two-one, Resolution in favor of Prop Two Facilities Bond Act two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, any comments? Okay, let's go trustee Reckler, then clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you. So I hope that everybody will consider voting for this. Vote yes on two in November. What this does is allows the state to go out and get a bond, which districts can then apply for and get matching funds for pro- for projects, building projects that they um uh are working on. And uh this particular uh the WCCUSD has participated in these matching fund uh programs for many, many years. And if my number is correct, Ms. Payne, you can correct me. I believe the district has uh recouped about over two hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. Yes, that is a correct number, two hundred and twenty-seven million dollars in funds from the state because we had bu- bond funds that then could go out and be matched. So I encourage everybody to look deeply at supporting this. You can find information uh on Cal Matters. KQED usually has really good pros and cons on uh ballot measures. The Legislative Analyst Office, if you Google LAO, they'll that's like the really nerdy um uh um piece, but I do encourage everybody to research it and consider voting yes in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Smith-Wilts. Um, yeah, I agree with everything that trustee Reckler uh mentioned. Um, I asked uh Ms. Payne and the president to put this on the agenda because I do think that this is a method for us to get additional funding to rebuild facilities. Um, because of matching funds, I believe this could not just increase our funding for Richmond High and Kennedy, but for Stige. Um, and it could actually help us for matching funds for other schools that need rebuilding, like Highland, Fairmont, Valley View, Betty Reed Soskin, and the many other schools that we need uh the funding for. So uh I really hope that people consider voting yes on this uh because it will really help us uh especially with the critical projects that we're hearing from the community that need to be made now. Um, also, this has failed in the ballot twice, so we can't rely that people are gonna vote for it because it's not a, for lack of better words, a sexy proposition, right? So we all have to roll up our sleeves and talk to our neighbors about why this is important for our district uh and for other large urban districts that are suffering of uh same issues that we are. One of the reasons why we're not going for a bond is because we're all feeling uh inflation and costs rising. But without any bond, we don't have additional funding, as we all know, for other facilities. So this will be critical for us, and I hope that people will consider voting yes on it. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler, your vote?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to our consent item. We have any items that are gonna be need to be pulled? Go ahead, trustee Reckler.
Thank you. C seven contracts. And then
All of them or a particular one?
Yeah, just that just that item number. And then C thirteen, Resolution Number two-four-two-five dash two-two, Resolution in Support of Education Workforce Housing for Board Approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now moving on to, oops, sorry, go ahead, trustee Phillips.
Thank you. Um, I didn't hear. Can I get a clarification on C seven? Was that the entire?
She said everything.
Okay.
Anything else? Go ahead, trustee Reckler.
I'm sorry. I guess you're looking at the agenda. There's also C eight, which is valuation of contract vendors, and C nine, ratification of contracts. I've only pulled one of that three contract um items.
Okay, anything else? All right, seeing none with the understanding that we are pulling C seven and C thirteen. The consent, the consent items are approved. Okay, let's now move on to D, the superintendent communication.
Thank you so much, ma'am. Can we pull up the presentation, please? If we can go to our next slide. The district would like to take time to recognize the contributions of members of our school community who passed away. I regret to inform you that longtime instructional assistant, Mrs. Bertha Holmes of Helms Middle School has passed. Mrs. Holmes worked as an instructional assistant at Helms Middle School from July nineteen ninety-nine until her retirement in August of two thousand and nine. We appreciate her contributions at Helms Middle School and in the special education department. Can you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you.
Uh, trustee Phillips, you have something you need to say?
Sorry, it was just a question about the moment of silence. Um, because the teacher called in about Steve Alameda, and I'm not sure if that's the same Steve Alameda from the Solutions Boys and Girls Club, but if we could, it is. I would have to verify, sir.
Doctor Moses, it is, right?
Yeah. Okay. Maybe if we could just include him, um, that would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Phillips.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we just wanna take a moment of silence also. In addition. Thank you very much. On the next slide, we want to honor those brave heroes, uh, and recognize the eleventh day of September, and remember the lives that were tragically taken. Their families, our country, and the brave first responders who risked their lives. We also like to pause for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Next slide. We want to take this opportunity, uh, to recognize one of our executive team members. I know, uh, she's looking, uh, quite surprised right now. But, uh, we want to honor Dr. Camille Johnson. Um, she's had a very tough task, uh, since she's been here in reforming, um, HR overall, specifically the recruitment, uh, pipeline and the process. She's also been tasked with improving HR efficiency and responsiveness, and also improving relationships with our labor partners. And I just want to share with, uh, all of you that she has been doing an amazing job in doing that. And just talk a little bit about her characteristics and what I've seen, um, from Dr. Johnson since I've been here. Uh, she's enthusiastic, she's creative, she's articulate, she's organized, she's attention to detail, and she's committed. She's demonstrated that she's ethical, confidential, and that she uses sound judgment. She thinks critically and is extremely skilled at problem-solving, collaborating, goal-setting, and goal-achievement. And the strengths are her ability to communicate effectively, develop strong relationships with our educational partners, maintaining a calm and professional office environment, learning, self-reflection, professionalism, and working together as a team, and being a great role model. I'm particularly, um, proud of Dr. Johnson and her team in leading us to having one of the smoothest starts. Um, and that's from our principals and the school sites, and they've said that, um, that we've had in a while. And we realize that this has been a collaborative effort from many different people, but we want to acknowledge the work of our human resources department, who've worked really, really hard last year throughout the summer, and still continue to work really hard. And this is all under the leadership of Dr. Johnson. And we do know that every vacancy has not been filled, but we are in a much better place this year, uh, than we have been in my previous three years. And we just wanted to pause and just acknowledge you, Dr. Johnson, for your leadership and who you are as well. May you come forward and be recognized, ma'am?
Everyone, we're gonna go down and take a picture also, and then we'll be right back.
No, I'm just doing this.
Okay, three. One, three, five, take the camera. All right. A couple of.
Yes.
I think that's sound, I think Danny.
Congratulations, Dr. Johnson. If we can go to the next slide. We have a few, um, pictures, uh, just to honor what happened for, um, our elementary back-to-school night. And we also want to share with you, we have some upcoming back-to-school nights at the next slide. Well, this is, um, a vaccination clinic at Downer. And then we want to honor and recognize the upcoming middle school back-to-school night, September the twelfth, and then high school back-to-school night, September the twenty-sixth. And then also, uh, college and career night, uh, October the tenth. It is open to all. That'd be Thursday, October the tenth, from five PM to seven PM, at El Cerrito High School. And then finally, we wanted to make sure that we uplift our parent advisory committees. And we have blurbs of what they do, but we wanted to make sure that we invite anyone listening to join those groups as appropriate. We have our African-American Parent Advisory Committee, our APAC. Our African-American Site Advisory Committee, ASAT. And then also our Community Advisory Committee for Special Ed, our CAC. Our English Learner Advisory Council, our ELAC. And then our District Local Control Accountability Plan, DLCAP. And then our Multilingual District Advisory Committee, our MDAC. And then also, we have included the meeting locations in the next meeting as well. This concludes my superintendent report, and I'll turn it back over to the president and then come back with the student trustee.
Thank you so very much. Board, are there any questions about the superintendent's report? Uh, trustee Phillips, go ahead.
You know, I will save it for later.
Thank you very much. Seeing no questions, Dr. Hurst, you can circle back around to our student trustee, please.
Yes, we saw, um, student trustee Luke Wilson come in. We didn't think he was gonna make it. He's coming from the county. Student trustee rep as well. We just want to share with you that Luke Wilson is currently a senior attending El Cerrito High School. Luke's passion for the intricate workings of the legal system as well, and his commitment to justice impels him to immerse himself fully in community engagement activities. Beyond academic pursuits, Luke actively seeks opportunities to deepen his understanding of legal principles and the application in the real-world context. As president of the school's mock team, mock trial team, Luke aims to cultivate the skills and knowledge necessary to effect positive change as a future lawyer. Luke's aspirations to practice law stems from a profound sense of duty to uphold the rights and dignity of every individual. Luke is committed to using his education and skills to exemplify integrity and advocacy in his community. In addition to being the student trustee this semester, he's also this year's student board member for Contra Costa County Office of Education, where he works closely with the board members and superintendent Mackey. Beyond this educational leadership role, Luke serves as the chief financial officer for A Youth, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization he and his friends started, which raises funds to purchase essentials for unhoused communities in the Bay Area. And then lastly, in Luke's free time, he loves to go to the gym. He's a power lifter and a bodybuilder who's competed in multiple competitions. Awesome. So that is a little bit about Mr. Wilson.
Thank you so very much, board. We're gonna do the same thing that we did for Mr. Espinoza Junior. Does anyone have anything to say to welcome Mr. Wilson? We'll start and we'll walk around this way. Uh, trustee Phillips, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I wasn't here for the first welcome, so I'd just like to say welcome to both of you. I'm glad to have you here. I look forward to, uh, getting to know you and, uh, your participation.
Thank you very much. Trustee Christian, anything from you?
Uh, yes, uh, welcome, um, welcome aboard and, uh, from EC, you know, the school I used to work at. But, um, it's good to have you and, uh, welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, trustee Reckler, anything?
Sure, I just wanted to say welcome. I know your time here will be spent wisely, and I know you'll have a good time. And at some point, I would love to hear after a few meetings that you've attended here, I would love to hear the differences between this board and the county board, and just kind of your reflections on both, on both positions. And, um, welcome. I'm, I'm looking forward to your feedback.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you, President. Trustee Wilson, welcome. Thank you for volunteering this position. Sounds like you're busy enough as it is, so I appreciate that you're here. Um, I just wanted to echo what I told, uh, trustee Espinoza Junior. You're here representing twenty-seven thousand students, uh, and that is really important to me, and I know for the rest of the board. Uh, like a student voice is critical as we make decisions that ultimately affect all of you. Um, so as you make your choices, as you make your decisions here, remember that it's not just you personally, you're representing, we're representing all those voices that are not present. Um, and there's a reason why your vote counts first, because we have to take that in consideration as well, as the representative of our students. So thank you so much for being here.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Um, thank you so much, Mr. Wilson. I really appreciate you being a student trustee. It's going to be a wonderfully exciting ride. Um, please let us know if you need anything. We're all here to give you the support and the resources necessary for you to be as successful as possible on this part of your journey. Um, now it's your opportunity. Do you have anything you would like to say, sir?
Uh, well, I would like to first thank all the board members and everyone here for allowing me to have this opportunity. It's an honor to serve on behalf of all the students, uh, in the West Contra Costa, you know, going to Valley View Elementary School, and then, uh, Comatsu Middle School, and now at El Cerrito High School. It's, uh, been an honor to be in the public school system in the West Contra Costa. And I believe with, um, student advocacy and student voice, we can really make a difference, and we can really listen to what students want, because they are the ones on the school grounds, and ultimately the decisions impact their lives. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are now moving on to our action items. We are on E one, twenty-four, twenty-five, Single Plan for Student Achievement, or SPSAs. Ms. Sigler, this is your item. No, our microphones are having a time tonight. Let's see if we can get you on. Or can somebody pass her one?
You may have to press the button on there, on the bottom of the mic, uh, console. There's a button.
At the very, very bottom. Oh, no, it has a red light. It looks like it's on. Hold on one second, Ms. Sigler. Let's see what we got going on.
No. Oh.
Yes.
Great. You, uh, a look to, uh, get this going. Yes. So we are bringing more SPSAs to you, uh, this evening. The total of all of the SPSAs represent three point eight million dollars in local control funding and four point five million dollars in title funding. They are allocated in accordance with the Single Plan for Student Achievements, which contain the school's vision and initiatives to improve student academics. The plans include annual measurable outcomes based on local metrics for each goal. The plans address the needs of all students, especially those at risk of not meeting state standards. The SPSAs are approved and developed by school site councils in consultations with ELACs and APACs. The public is able to access and view these plans on the district website. District staff has completed its review of the draft SPSAs and confirmed that they meet these requirements. Therefore, on behalf of Dr. Hurst, I am requesting that the board approve the twenty-four SPSA, excuse me, the two SPSAs, uh, listed in the board this evening.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Staff, do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, we're moving to questions. Remember, it's three questions and two-minute comments. Any board member have any question? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry, did you just say two?
Yes, two are coming forward this evening.
Okay, the only one I think I see listed is Aloney.
It should also be Mira Vista, but let me double-check on that.
Yes, I'm sorry, point of order, I, um, we only see Aloney, so I, I only reviewed that one as well.
Okay, all right.
President.
So we'll just, we'll just bring Aloney forward?
So bring the one forward, yes. Um, and I will figure out what happened there. So thank you for pointing that out. I apologize.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Reckler, did you have any other questions?
No, just a comment. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Alright, any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
President, I'm making, I'm sorry. I trustee Ruckler's hand was first. I just jumped in. I move that we approve the S P S A for Aloney Elementary School.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments? Remember, one minute comments, please. Three questions, two minute comments. Sorry, two minutes? Any comment? Trustee Ruckler, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you. So we had caller calling in saying, you know, if the form could be shortened, which I've advocated, you know, before, so if that's possible. And then the second is, I don't know, do you grid out? Do you make a grid for your, for the schools as to the positions that they need to fill? Because this one came forward first and it didn't look like it was properly constituted. It looked like there were only five. And for an elementary school, you have ten, you have to have ten. So I think it might be helpful, like sometimes you can't get all the people. And so you just have little spots and then you just say couldn't fill or something like that. It might be more transparent and easier for schools to figure out who they need to get or what, you know, like we know when we look at them. And uh that's it. Those are my only comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we're on to the vote. Mr. Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, your vote, sir.
Yes.
Thank. Trustee Phillips, your vote, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Ruckler.
Ruckler, yes.
Clark Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We are now moving to item E two Provisional Internship Permit, P I P. Uh Dr. Johnson, this is your item, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, President Smith Folds and members of the school board. If I can just take a moment, Dr. Hurst, to say thank you for the acknowledgement and also the acknowledgement of my amazing team who's working really hard for our school district. Thank you. And as far as our provisional internship permit. This permit allows our newly hired teachers to enter an internship program with our school district.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, does anyone have any questions? Okay, does anyone want to make a motion? I'll move that we approve the uh Pips for this month. Anyone a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. Uh we'll start with uh trustee Miles. Wilson, I'm sorry. That was a previous trust, student trustee. I apologize. Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Espinoza Junior?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips.
Yes.
Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Trustee Ruckler?
Ruckler, yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Pass unanimously with one absent. Um okay, now we're gonna move to E three. Dr. Johnson, I believe this is your item as well.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez Hoy. This is our variable term waivers and it authorizes the school district to assign teachers based on their subject matter knowledge.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, are there any questions? Okay, can I have a motion? I move that we approve the variable term waivers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Are there any comments? Okay, let's move to a vote. We'll start with trustee Wilson.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Espinoza Junior.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips. Thank you, trustee Christian.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Ruckler.
Ruckler, yes.
Thank you. And I'm a yes. Pass unanimously with one absent. Uh now we're gonna move to E four, resolution number two four two five dash one six, twenty twenty four new money. Uh and I think Ms. Payne, this is your item.
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Um so tonight before the board, we bring this resolution forward asking for authorization for the second issuance of Measure R to fund the modernization projects at both Kennedy High School and Richmond High School. Back in March of twenty twenty, the voters approved Measure R in the amount of five hundred and seventy five million. We did the first issuance of seventy five million and we're here tonight seeking authorization to move forward with the second issuance, which would be in the value of two hundred and fifty million. The dollars would be used to fund both the Kennedy High School and Richmond High School projects. Uh both of those projects are currently a hundred percent schematic design. We have received proposals for lease lease back and will be completing that procurement process and bringing that forward to the board. And that's why tonight we bring this resolution forward to you tonight. Um seeking approval to move forward with the issuance. Uh one of the things that's important to note uh pursuant to ed code. Um this uh will need to be issued through the county and we have worked in close collaboration with them because second interim was qualified. And so it's just in compliance of ed code. It's outlined in the resolution. It is still pursuant to the district's direction, which is really supporting the projects. Um but there will be a next step should the board approve this item tonight. I have with me here tonight on behalf of bond counsel, Mr. Graham Beck from Nixon Peabody. I also have available online um Mr. Blake Bohm from K N N, our bond municipal financial advisor um to assist with any questions that you might have.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Payne. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Board, do you have any questions? Three questions, two minute comments? Oh, there is a public comment. Ms. Gash is on there.
Ms. Maisha Harris Gash, please unmute yourself.
I just want to say that we are almost out of school.
Ms. Gash, here. We can't hear you.
Because, oh shoot. I guess I ain't supposed to say that. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Ms. Gash.
Okay, I maybe trying to say, you need to say nothing, my hairs cast. I just wanted to say that we're a month into school and that we haven't heard anything at Kennedy about the next phases and moving forward. We were supposed to have a meeting at the end of the year and that meeting did not happen, so just don't forget about us, you know. We need to keep this process moving and going, so that's all I wanted to say.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, are there any questions? Three questions, two minute comments? Trustee Ruckler, your questions?
Thank you. So what's the role of the county in this now?
So the county pursuant to ed code, um the county will be the issuer of the bonds on the district's behalf.
Okay, and then to the bond team, so can you tell me a little bit more about that and does it affect the rating or anything about the sale of the bonds?
So I'll turn that over to the team that we have available online to provide a little bit more detail about what that process would look like.
And I'm I'm happy to start. Uh this is Graham Beck from Nixon Peabody. We are bond counsel to the district. Um I can speak to the legal requirement and it is simply a uh flat ed code requirement that if the district has an interim report. Uh it's most recent interim report that is qualified or negative, uh the county must act as issuer. Uh it's an administrative role. Uh it does not change the structure of the bonds beyond that. Um they would effectively act as any other uh general obligation bond that you have outstanding at the moment. Um and I will uh defer to my colleague Blake Beam uh to discuss any impact on the ratings or anything else, but um I'll let him speak to that.
Yeah, thanks, Graham. Uh yeah, in terms of what is provided to the investor community and the rating agencies, it it's all uh based on West Contra Costa Unified. Um uh the 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 rating itself will be assigned uh as a district general obligation bond as the district has gone through that process uh in the past on prior bond sales. Um the investors themselves will be reviewing um a disclosure document, which is um primarily focused on the district itself uh and the ratings of the district. So um nothing through this kind of administrative process um will uh negatively impact uh the bond sale. Um but nevertheless, this is a requirement um of the education code and uh is required based on the last um uh financial report uh certification.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
President, I move, President, I move resolution number two four two five dash one six. The title's very lengthy, so do I have to read the whole thing? Okay.
No, that's all. Is there a second? Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. Mr. Espinoza Junior?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Ruckler?
Ruckler, yes.
Thank you, Clark Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to item E six, resolution number two four. Am I right or wrong? Five. Thank you so much, staff. We are now moving, and Clark Gonzalez Hoy, thank you. We are now moving to resolution two four two fat five dash seventeen twenty twenty four refunding resolution standard. Ms. Payne, this is your item?
Yes, thank you very much. Um so the next two items before you are in accordance with the board policy for refunding and restructuring um that was adopted back in April of twenty thirteen. What the policy really sets forward is decision, a decision-making process when we're looking at the historical debt of the bond program and really looking for opportunities to create taxpayer savings. And so beyond just the statutory requirements, our board policy has set thresholds looking that we would have a minimum net present value savings of at least four percent and a minimum of one million dollars present value savings when we're seeking candidates for refunding. And so what we're bringing before you in the next two items are uh refunding of the bonds. Both of these do exceed the board policy um thresholds. So specifically for item E five before you, which is a refunding through a more standard process. Um we estimate a present value savings of four point five percent and um a minimum of um in excess of two million dollars present value savings. And so um as part of our annual process of looking at refunding opportunities to really um be good fiduciaries of um the taxpayer dollars and to return those savings back to the community. We bring this item for you, before you tonight um and recommend approval.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, do we have any questions? Seeing no questions, is there a motion? Go ahead, Clark Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you. I move resolution number two four two five dash one seven.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any comments? Put two minutes on the clock, please. And then trustee Ruckler, if you could wait for the clock, please. Thank you so much, staff. I appreciate it. Go ahead, trustee Ruckler.
No, I probably should have asked this as a question, but I'll just make it as a comment. And if it's not right, you could just wave me off, but I would like to uh say that I think I'm glad that this is not a Cinderella option or we're not digging through a vault looking for uh names of bondholders. So this seems to be a return to just regular practice. Um and that should have been a question rather than a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move straight to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Ruckler, your vote?
Ruckler, yes.
Thank you, Clark Gonzalez Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We are now moving to E six, resolution number two four two five dash eighteen, twenty four, twenty twenty four refunding resolution tender. Uh teacher Payne, your item?
Thank you so much. So um in this package of refunding, we estimate a present value savings of five point five percent and in excess of two million dollars in savings. Um I would also like to share that by bringing all three of these items together and doing them at the same time, there's an efficiency and an economy to the cost of issuance. So there will be additional savings. With the board's approval of this item tonight, we will continue to move forward. Um and then we would be coming back to the board at the conclusion so that we could um share the good news.
Thank you so very much. Do we have any public comment?
We have no public comment.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Board, any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
President, I move resolution number two four two five dash one eight.
Thank you so much. Is there a second? Second from trustee Christian. Thank you so much. It has been motion and properly second. Any comments from the board? Seeing none, we're off to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote? Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Ruckler, your vote?
Ruckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez, mm mm, clerk Gonzalez Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. Board, we are now moving to the pull consent items. The first item was uh C seven. Trustee Ruckler, you pulled this item, contracts. Go ahead.
Yes, so I don't have anything specific. I just want to register a no vote um on contracts just due to some weak A M Os. Thank you.
Alright, we're gonna go to, we're voting. Oh, no, trustee Christian, or mm mm, trustee Phillips, go ahead.
Um I actually wanted to pull the Mindful Life Project contract separately just because I wanted to vote explicitly on that.
So first we'll vote on the pulled contract from you and then we'll vote on all the rest of the contracts for trustee Ruckler. Okay. So let's go to, we're pulling the Mindful Life contract specifically out of the packet and we're gonna go for the vote on that, okay? Process?
Sorry, you just need a motion or for us.
Let's motion. So we need a motion, well, we don't need a motion to pull Mindful Life. We need a motion to vote on the pulled item, which is Mindful Life. Okay. Do I have a motion?
Sorry, I'll make a motion, but I need to pull up the contract.
Okay, just give us one second.
Unless someone else is ready.
Student trustees, what we're doing is we have a packet of contracts that come to the board. So we, they they usually are under consent. So that means that if no one pulls them off of consent to talk about them, we just vote them in, right? But these contracts got pulled off of consent, so because they're put off of consent, now we're having a discussion about them and then a vote. So the person who pulls it gets to, if they want to explain why they can, if not, we'll just go straight to a motion and then they can register their vote out loud. Does that make sense?
And that contract's been voted on a single hour.
So yes, so trustee Ruckler pulled the whole packet of contracts. But inside that packet of contracts, trustee Phillips was like, whoa, let me pull this one of them out of that um particular packet. So then we're gonna vote on the one that trustee Phillips pulled, which is Mindful Life. And then after that vote goes however it goes, then we're gonna vote on the rest of the packets, the rest of the contracts that are left in the packet.
Understood.
Uh thank you. Is that good? Okay. Go ahead, Clark Gonzalez Hoy.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for Mindful Life Project for Grant Elementary School.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second that. Board, any comments? Seeing none, we'll go straight to the vote. We're voting to approve, to approve the Mindful Life contract for Grant. So your yes says we approve it, okay? Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote, sir?
So.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Ruckler, your vote? Thank you, trustee Clark Gonzalez Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So that passes. Now we're gonna move on to voting for the rest of the contracts that are in that contract packet. Is there a motion?
President, I'll move that we approve the additional contracts on their C seven.
Thank you. Is there a second? I'll second that. Do we have any comments? Seeing no comments, we'll go to the vote. Trustee Espinoza Junior, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Ruckler, your vote? Thank you, clerk Gonzalez Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you so very much. We are now moving to item C thirteen, resolution number two four two five dash twenty two, resolution in. resolution in support of education workforce housing. Trustee Ruckler, you pulled this item?
Sorry, trustee Ruckler, point of order, uh, president, uh, we have a public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Can we go to the public comment? Thank you.
Yes, our public comment is Anthony Caro.
There's a little face button. Hey, testing. Thank you. All right, uh, good evening. My name is Anthony Caro, and I'm here to speak in favor.
Second, speak Fran. We gotta wait a minute. I don't know if it's two minutes or one, two minutes or one. It's an action item. Speak fast, Fran.
One minute?
Uh huh.
Roger. Good evening. My name is Anthony Caro, and I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution to support education workforce housing. As you all know, WCCUSD is facing a severe teacher shortage crisis. In my opinion, the two best ways is to, to retain and recruit high-quality educators is to increase teacher salaries and implement education workforce housing. During my time in active duty army, I utilized the military workforce housing. Without the stress of having to pay rent or an extra mortgage in addition to our house in Richmond, I was able to put more focus towards my job. Passing education workforce housing is a way to alleviate the stress that our teachers face when it comes to the issue of not being able to afford to live in the community that they teach. It could also alleviate some of the district's financial burden by, by increasing uh, revenue. I urge this board to pass this resolution as it's a first step in implementing a very much-needed program in this district. Once, once you, once you pass this resolution, I urge you to implement the next steps, which is utilizing the county's Measure X program to help with cost. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Our next public comment is Maureen.
Hold on, Fran. Can we turn that mic off for me? Thank you so much.
Maureen Toms, please unmute yourself.
Uh, good evening, um, members of the board. My name is Maureen Toms, and I'm the deputy director of Contra Costa County Department of Conservation and Development. When the Department of Conservation and Development implemented, or uh, adopted the sixth cycle housing element, we identified two sites in unincorporated county that are surplus to the West Contra Costa Unified School District as housing sites. That is the former Adams Middle School site and Seaview. Um, in addition, we adopted policies where we will assist with technical assistance other public agencies in developing these um, pro, these properties as affordable housing. So I wanted to let you know that, and that is in your resolution. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
That concludes.
Thank you so very much. We're now moving on to a motion. Nope. I'm losing my mind tonight. Do you have a question, trustee Ruckler?
No, I really had a, I really had a comment, and I just wanted to pull this off consent to give it a little sunshine. I didn't want it to be buried on the consent calendar. And so I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that there is a push uh, all over to, for school districts to look at property that's surplus that they can't use or won't use and to look at ways to potentially develop housing. And so that is what this resolution is about. And so I really, I just pulled it, you know, just to make sure that everybody knows about it. Um, the, the other thing that um, I did want to um, pull out of this is that um, this resolution also includes that the WCCUSD is gonna be applying for the CSBA twenty-twenty-five Cohort for Education Workforce Housing Workshop Series. Uh, and they're developing a team. It looks like there's gonna be a team developed to attend and to learn what they can about workforce housing. I have already emailed in that I am interested in being a part of this team. And I emailed when CSBA um, uh, put this out in email, I just put my name in to be on the list of, you know, like, when they release the application, and I recently just received an email back saying that the application process is open. So the WCCUSD should apply now, and if you don't have that, I can send it to you. Um, but that's, that's really it. It's not gonna be easy. It's a long process. It's really gonna uh, be, be a long time. But this class at least would be a, put, put a toe in the water and figure out how this might work. So thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, were you making a motion or no?
I think trustee Christian was gonna make it.
Go ahead, trustee Christian.
To make a motion?
To make a motion. Let's make a motion first, then we'll do it second, and then we'll do comments.
Okay, um.
Number thirteen, C thirteen.
Uh, I moved that um, number, move resolution number uh, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five dash twenty-two, uh, resolution, uh, support of educational uh, teacher workforce housing.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you so much. Any comments from the board? Uh, trustee Phillips, go ahead, sir?
I don't know if I'd say it's the first step, uh, um, because I think it's something that's been looked at before, but it's an important step um, to renewing interest um, and the possibility of doing something like this. I think that making sure our folks um, are, are housed um, is extremely important, um, not just because people need a place to live, but it's also about being, our doing right by um, employees. Um, as this thing moves forward, though, you know, I um, want us to also think about how uh, whatever housing we possibly are able to create um, is allocated uh, fairly. Uh, because realistically, we're not gonna, even if we are able to do this, we're not gonna be able to house every employee in the district and their families, right? So when we look at the teachers we have, we look at the classified, we look at admin, you know, there has to be some kind of thought. Um, and I know this will happen, you know, but there has to be some kind of thought as to how um, these things are done fairly, right? Um, so something that is good uh, doesn't end up causing um, division.
Thank you so much, trustee Phillips. Any other comments? Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you, president. Um, I wanna start by thanking trustee Christian for putting this resolution together and sending it to us to put on the agenda. Um, I agree with everything trustee Phillips said. I mean, I think we engaged on this like six years ago. Trustee Phillips and I were part of a committee with the past superintendent and looking at this, and unfortunately, it was cost prohibitive at the time, uh, which kind of made it fall apart. Uh, we had some partnerships. I think what makes it special now is that the state is trying to invest in workforce housing, which didn't really exist then. So um, it does seem like this is the right time to do this. Uh, I, I agree with everything trustee Phillips said about how we manage that and develop it. I mean, Santa Clara, uh, I worked with a school district that developed about two hundred and fifty workforce housing units for educators. Um, I mean, we have seventeen hundred teachers, right? So I mean, and, and, you know, thirty-five hundred employees. So I think it's gonna be difficult for us to figure that out, and I think it's gonna take some time, uh, but we might as well get started. Um, and I appreciate that we're doing this because with the shortage of staff that exists today, uh, we gotta be able to find any tool in our disposal so that we can get people to come to our district, uh, especially people from this area, which I think would be also maybe a cool qualifier. Um, but something for someone else to figure out, but um, I appreciate that we put this together.
Thank you so very much. Any other comments? Go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Um, I believe that it would probably be important to look into a specific percentage of how much we are paying towards housing to um, teachers and staff at the schools. I believe it is a, a great resolution. I believe there needs to be more thought into a uh, actual percentage being given to uh, these teachers and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other comments from the board? Uh, trustee Christian, go ahead.
Yes, I just wanna um, thank the board for this because this is, you know, this vehicle will help um, bring in new teachers and um, and really um, take advantage of um, you know, bringing in this vehicle to really um, to help, help our district. Because throughout the state of California, there's a lot of other districts are moving in this direction. So um, thank you.
Thank you so much, trustee Christian. Any comments? Seeing none, we are moving to the vote. Okay. Trustee Espinoza Jr., your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Wilson, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Phillips, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Ruckler, your vote?
Ruckler, yes.
Thank you, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy, your vote?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We're now moving to item F. There are no discussion items this evening. So we are moving to item G, comments from the Board of Education. Student trustees, I did not ask your pronouns. You were both he/him. Is that accurate? Okay, thank you. Uh, we are moving to comments from the board and future agenda items. We'll get two minutes. If you have a comment, please let me know by raising your hand. Okay, we'll go with trustee Ruckler first. Trustee Ruckler, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to address the closing comments of clerk Gonzalez-Hoy and President Smithfold said at the August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-four board meeting. In closing comments, I apologized for offending both trustees and actions related to Mike Fine. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, you seem to accept the apology, but then immediately express that you think I have implicit bias. You're entitled to express your opinion, but I do ask you to, to respectfully request that you reflect on whether the closing minutes of a board meeting was the best time, place, and space to say that. Because again, I found myself in a position where I was not able to express or express myself about the comments made. And then I want to clear up something that I've heard the board president say several times in relation to past board race and equity retreats. And over time, I think the comments have seemed to indicate that people refuse to show up or won't show up for race and equity training. For me, the trainings were held when I had professional obligations and I was not available to attend. Finally, I wish to have my entire closing comments. That's item C from the Monday, September ninth, twenty-twenty-four Joint Board and CBSC meeting included in the minutes of that meeting. I forgot to say that last night. And I will email those comments in now. Thank you.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, president. Um, so the last couple of weeks, I've been able to visit some schools. Um, and I've been just so excited about the work that's happening at our, uh, our sites. Um, I got to go to Ossoer High School, uh, uh, Deans High School, Penal Valley High School, um, and a few of the elementary schools, and Betty Reed Soskins. Um, and just the learning that's happening, it's pretty amazing with the difficulties their systems currently experiencing. Oh, and it's, and of course, uh, you know, the, the temporary campus for Stige and, and DeJohn Middle School. Um, and the joy that I'm seeing in classrooms, I'm just so proud and thankful for our educators, our principals, our classified staff. Our schools uh, were really clean when we started the school year. Um, and I think that the anti-racist work that's happening is starting to really trickle to our schools. Um, I actually saw people using our anti-racist statement at schools, which is uh, something that I felt really proud because I haven't seen that in the past, working here uh, for the last decade and a half. So um, kudos to both of you, Dr. Hurson, president, for pushing us through that work. Um, and I just wanted us all to continue to encourage the work that's happening at the schools. The media concentrates on the negatives. There's plenty of negatives and plenty of work for us to do. But there's so much positive that is not being covered by the media, and that it's not being shared, and that it gets silenced. Um, our educators and principals, everyone is working so hard every single day, and they're doing really good work. And that said, I do want to acknowledge that there are very difficult things going on in our system, right? Between our budget and lack of staffing, there are people who are working incredibly hard, incredibly hard and long hours under these circumstances. Uh, but I, I, when I went back to school night, I heard some amazing comments from parents um, about the work that's happening in, in schools. So I'm just really proud of that. It just makes me excited to put my daughter in our schools uh, in the next couple of years. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Trustee Phillips, you have a comment? Trustee Chris, where were y'all two minutes ago? Trustee Phillips, you have a comment, and trustee Christian, you have a comment? Okay, trustee Phillips, go ahead, sir.
So during the superintendent report, um, I said that I was gonna save my question. I saved it because it was really more of a comment. Um, and I was saving it for now. Um, and it's actually in relation to uh, your presentation regarding Dr. Johnson. Um, and you said that this is the best opening that we've had um, in your three years here. Um, I actually think this is the best opening that I've had in my eight years here. Um, and I just wanted to give both of you, um, and really your entire team, but you were highlighting Dr. Johnson today. So I wanted to give her a shout out and your team a shout out. Um, district um, is complex. Um, and there are some very beautiful things in it, and there are some very ugly things in it, to be frank. Um, but I do think that this district has the ability um, to succeed. Um, and it has the ability to go uh, much farther than it has uh, in the past. Um, sometimes we as trustees need to get out of the way of that, to be honest. Uh, and sometimes we encourage it, right? Where people are not perfect. Um, but I don't want you all um, to ever think that you can't because someone says that you can't. You can. Um, I might fight with you sometimes. I might fuss with you sometimes, but I believe in you all. The people who are on the dais and the people who are sitting out in the audience right now. Um, collectively, you can do this.
Thank you so very much, trustee Christian.
Excuse me, uh, yes, thank you. Um, first, I wanna thank my colleagues for voting in favor of the teacher workforce housing. I appreciate that. Um, secondly, um, I attended the back-to-school night uh, at Stige Elementary and um, Margaret King, and as well as uh, Lincoln. And like um, my colleague, uh, trustee uh, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy say, you know, we are doing a lot of positive things and, and um, and and it's just how the, the good things are not being um, displayed. But our students and staff are doing a wonderful job. I want to say to our teachers and our classified staff, everybody is doing a wonderful job, and I appreciate the hard work that you do. And um, that's what make the school runs, when everybody um, work together and put in to make it happen and to help our students. Um, last of all is that we just gotta keep on moving and doing the things to make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Done? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and take my two minutes. We are in the fourth week of school. It feels like it's the twenty-fourth week of school instead of the fourth week of school. Um, I think that it was just exhausting for some reason. I don't know why. I haven't put my finger on it yet. I think it's because I know staff worked all the way through the summer. I know that teachers work all the way through the summer, and I know that our uh, administrators and our classified staff work all the way through the summer, so it feels very exhausting. So take the time for yourself. Be gracious and be courteous to one another because we are all literally trying to make this one hundred and eighty days together. Um, I want to like acknowledge the back-to-school nights that the elementary schools have done. Thank you very much, and we do have middle school and high school coming up. I also want to make sure that, just to put it out there, when we are dropping off and picking up our children, please drive carefully. Slow down, be cautious. I do traffic at Lupine Hills, and I also do traffic in the middle school and high school. Slow down. We have to make sure that that is part of our safety. Nothing is more important than getting back home safe and dropping your kids off safely. So please, everyone, slow down. To our littles, our TKs and our kindergarteners, it's four weeks. You are doing a great job. You are blossoming into our school system. I see it, and I'm very, very happy and proud. To our seniors, four weeks, you, you know, we have thirty four more, and then you're out of here. So. Thank you for everyone. Thank you for all that you do. Teachers, thank you for all that you do. Parents and guardians, please drop off those snacks to the teachers' classrooms. They, it comes out of their own pocket. So graham crackers, goldfish, bottled waters, things like that, napkins. Paper towels, cloths, wipes, all of those things are important to our teachers to keep them moving. Cabinet, I want to say thank you. You truly are a dynamic and wonderful cabinet, and you are very much appreciated. Dr. Hurst, thank you for your leadership and all that you do, and we will carry on. We will not be turned around. We are moving forward. Those of you who know, it's the part of the song, ain't nobody gonna turn us around. All right. Thank you so very much. We are now. Uh, just for the record, clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, it is eight nineteen. You told me to have us out of here by eight thirty. You say it, I do it. Okay, so we are now moving on to H, the next scheduled Board of Education meeting. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at Dejounte Middle School. Everyone, it is eight twenty. We are now adjourned. Thank you. Have a great night. Oh, ten minutes, Fran. What, what? That's great. Yes, Fran, yes. Yeah, you were giving me.